Good evening, I'd like to call the January 24th meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order. If you could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. This meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee is going to be held in person, so public comment will also be held in person? Hold on, we're having some technical difficulties here on set. In addition, the public will be able to access meeting via livestream at youtube.com/DHTVmedia. We're working through some sound issues here, so... The meeting will be rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 9 on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 PM, Friday at 6:00 AM, Saturday at 8:00 AM, Sunday at 2:00 PM. The meeting will be rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 18 on Monday and Saturday at 12:00 PM and Thursday at 3:00 PM. Ms. Gunther, may we have a roll call, please?
Shannon Jenkins?
Here.
Mary Wade?
Here.
Kathleen Amaral?
Here.
John Nunes?
Yep.
Chris Oliver?
Here.
Alright, so we may not open the public hearing on school choice for another minute, so we will skip ahead and open public comment. We do not have an audience here, so I suspect there will be no public comment unless someone runs down the hallway. But if people do, would like their, you know, opinions heard, they're welcome to email the School Committee Secretary Kate Gunther, and she always forward your emails to us. Alright, so next, I'm gonna skip down, we still have a little time to entertain a motion for the approval of the regular session minutes of January 10th.
So moved.
Second. Alright, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes and a second by Ms. Wade. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any abstentions?
No.
Oh, you were here, that's right, you were, okay.
She was online.
You just weren't here physically. So that is five in favor, none opposed. According to my watch, it is now 6:35. So I believe I have to, I always look to Mr. Nunes.
You have to.
I will open the public hearing-
Yes ma'am.
-on school choice for school year 2022-2023. Dr. Gifford, would you like to say a few words? Or do we, we have to wait for the public to comment here and then we'll come around to that, sorry?
You can go that way, and then if there's any public comment-
Right, well, we can take that up under new business, Dr. Gifford can tell us then.
Yep, sure, how it's going.
Hold our public hearing open. Is there any rule, Mr. Nunes? Mr. Nunes is our School Committee Historian, on how long we have to hold open a public hearing?
No, I mean, there's, with all due respect, there's no one here to, so, you know, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing on school choice for school year 2022-2023.
I'll second that.
Alright, so I have a motion on the table by Mr. Nunes, a second by Mr. Oliver. Is there any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Opposed? Alright, that motion carries unanimously. Alright, so I am gonna take one thing in front of our Student Representative Report, Evan, and that is about the naming facility, about the DHS Basketball Court and the vote on the naming decision. Dr. Gifford, do you want to start and then?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for taking this out of order, and as you received information about the committee that we had, the naming committee come together, we had about 15 or 16 folks apply to be on the committee from the community and staff. Mr. Oliver and I looked over the people and made a choice, and we had nine people, and that was including Mr. Oliver on the committee. So we met, I thought we were going to meet for a few meetings, and prepared a rubric for them to assess the folks, went over the information that we had, and lo and behold, and I know Mr. Oliver will speak to this as well, when we arrived at the meeting, we had folks, alumni, we had past and current coaches attend, we had a community member, and people that had been students, well, it's Mr. Gaspar was recommended.
We had a former administrator.
Yeah, administrators as well, so we felt we had a good, a good group of folks, come, coaches, of course, as I said, and before we even got to, they just overwhelmingly wanted to approve and recommend that Mr. Steven Gaspar, that we named the basketball court after him. And do you want to add a few things that he, they spoke about him and?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, thank you, Dr. Gifford. I think it was a very productive meeting, I think it was great to have such a cross-section of the community involved in this process. And, you know, especially from the, I think there was two of them, students that were there, former students, could not just say enough about Coach Gaspar, especially with the fact that, outside of your typical coach's role, as far as following up with them at home over the weekends to make sure they're getting, you know, their homework done, and really engaging, we heard a lot of that, Dr. Gifford, of just really engaging outside of the school day to just make sure that his players are not only performing the best on the court, but also the best at home, you know, whether it be with their families, whether it be with their, with their students, they just couldn't say enough, as well as we had a couple of current and former staff members there, and once again, just that, you know, they spoke about him, Mr. Coach Gaspar and his wife starting the Dartmouth High School after-prom, and the commitment that was put into that. They, they went on, it was a lot of just all-around, we looked at it with the rubric, you know, we looked at the, I looked at the rubric, and at the end of the day, from the big picture of hitting all the different spots, you know, no one could think of anyone more deserving, and even, I forgot who it was, it might have been Mr. Hickey, a former administrator, that actually had some of the stats, of the state stats-
I know, yeah.
-from when he coached, for how many wins over the seasons versus like the current records and all that, so it was very impressive to hear.
It was.
So, as Dr. Gifford said overwhelmingly, the recommendation of what was made for Coach Gaspar.
Right, right. One of the things that stood out for me as well was the idea of not only, it was beyond the coaching court, it was beyond basketball, it was as a teacher and a mentor and a role model for all of the students for 30 some odd years, and one of the people said he had had some troubles as a, as a student, and how much he helped him just in his personal life as well. So, anyway, Mr. Oliver and I looked at each other and said, "Well, I guess we go no further" because it was so overwhelming.
It's unanimous.
It was unanimous vote to recommend that the basketball court in the Carlin Lynch Activity Center be named after Mr. Steven Gaspar. And so if we can, we'd love a vote for the committee, and why we wanted to move it up is he happens to be here on his off-time with the basketball team tonight, and we wanted to then bring him in to at least let him know what, because as far as I know, he doesn't know this has been going on, maybe he's been hiding it nicely, but I don't know. And then, of course, talk about an official recognition at one of the home, upcoming home games, so that's, that's what we have to say. That's our recommendation.
So I will entertain a motion to approve naming the Dartmouth High Basketball Court after former DHS Basketball Coach Steve Gaspar?
I'll second that.
Well, someone has to make it-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Oliver and a second by Ms. Amaral. Is there any discussion?
Well deserved.
Yeah, I'll just say I don't know him, but he sounds, he sounds great, so I'm happy to, you know, follow the recommendation of the committee on this. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so that motion carries unanimously. Now we're gonna go try to get him, we're gonna, Evan, we're gonna have you go ahead and do your report, it's our Student Representative Report, and then we'll come back around to that, so thank you, Evan.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Since our last meeting, a lot has been going on here at Dartmouth High School. The DHS Theater Company is preparing for its spring show, Shrek the Musical. Roles have been assigned and performances will take place later this spring. In addition to Shrek, the theater company recently held auditions for their upcoming competition piece. Our Unified Bowling Club has taken several bowling trips this winter, with members having fun and exemplifying the power of teamwork and inclusion. Last week, DHS welcomed Landon Callahan, a speaker from the Safe and Supportive Schools Initiative. Landon met with administrators like Mr. Tebow and Mr. Shea, members of the GSA, and Ms. Correa, the GSA advisor. Additionally, Landon spoke with the faculty on ways to support LGBTQ+ students at DHS as part of our school's efforts to create an environment that is welcoming and supportive to all students. Dartmouth High School was awarded College Board's Computer Science Female Diversity Award last week in recognition of our high school's high female representation in AP Computer Science classes. Congratulations to our STEM students, computer science teachers, and everyone else who made this award possible. Additionally, I would like to congratulate DHS Music Students Jonas Chen, Ryan Church, William Jordan, and Mohammed Hijazi, all of whom have been selected to be a part of the Southeastern Junior District Music Festival. The four of them will represent Dartmouth High School at this three-day music festival in March, joining other talented student musicians from across the South Coast. Thank you, and that concludes my update for this meeting.
Thank you, Evan. Does anybody have any questions for Evan?
What's going on?
Yeah, thank you very much, Evan.
Thank you, and as always, we welcome you to stay. If you want to get a taste of sort of what a regular school committee is like, you're welcome to stay.
I finished all my homework today, so if you don't, if you don't mind, I will.
That's fabulous news. So, I'm still waiting.
Wasn't gonna have enough to do.
I'll be able to see behind you, it looks like-
This looks interesting.
Oh yeah, it looks like they're coming now, so we'll just stall for a minute or so.
Grant Field in.
Yeah, we did the minutes, so we're good, so we'll just-
Yep.
-wait and welcome our distinguished guests.
He doesn't know, I hope. He's like, "What is going on?"
Everyone, anyone watching us is like, "What is going on?" too. But that will hopefully soon be clear. Coach Gaspar.
We're so happy you're here, because we had something to-
We need substitute teachers, and we want you to come back.
We're recruiting.
So we don't want to throw you a curveball here, but we, we, some time ago, Mr. Grant Field here recommended that a special award be given to you. Here comes the team, let's wait for the team. Come on. Come on.
How are you? Good, thank you.
Alright, alright, come on in. Alright, alright. They don't even know what's going on yet.
Hold your, hold the pause for just a second. We haven't shared the, shared the applaud-worthy news.
We haven't shared the good news, yes.
Alright.
So as the team enters, as I'll start again, some time ago, actually last year, Mr. Grant Field sent me a letter asking that you receive a special award for everything that you've done for Dartmouth. That award is to name the basketball court after you in the Carlin Lynch Activity Center. We then proceeded to have a naming committee come forth, we had members of the community meet with us, with Mr. Oliver and myself.
There was nine of us we met last week.
And we met, and before we had two, were able to say about two words, this committee of past coaches, current coaches of all different sports-
Past administrators.
Administrators, alumni, community members, came forward overwhelmingly and spoke praises about you and the work that you've done for Dartmouth and the students and families of Dartmouth. So tonight, this committee has just voted to name the basketball court in the Carlin Lynch Activity Center after you, Mr. Gaspar, and I know your team is very proud of that. After you'll be able to speak, of course, I'm sorry to throw this on you, but we will then have a special ceremony at one of the upcoming home games and be able to make that tribute to you with, of course, Mr. Grant Field speaking at that night. Not gonna get away without it, so, anyway, if you'd like to say a couple of words.
Oh, I just want to thank you, I'm speechless, I didn't, I had no idea.
Good.
I would like to thank everyone, but that's not, it wasn't me, it was them, all the players. I don't know how many players have played after 35 years of-
Right.
-coaching, but hundreds of players, it wasn't me, I just guided them, I didn't put any ball in the basket, I didn't, I didn't steal any pass. They, it's the players, but I'm quite honored, you know, Mr. Lynch was a great friend of mine, I've known John since high school.
1966, I was thinking about that.
We don't want to go that far.
I was only in eighth grade, Steve.
But again, thank you very much, and, you know, but again, it's, it was, it's not me, it's them. But it's quite an honor, and I'm very, I'm flattered, I don't know, I'm stuck, I'm-
I imagine. One thing I want you to know, and there'll be more said at the night when we do the tribute, is the folks that came, were on the committee, they spoke even more beyond what you do on the court with, what you did with kiddos on the court, it was about what you did for the students overall, their families, and just everything that you contributed to the community.
And that after-prom, that was really my wife's idea.
And she too, they mentioned her.
Yeah, we did that for 24 years, and that was a great honor for us. We got that idea from Durfee, and we took it for 24 years.
That was certainly something that was discussed at the naming committee's meeting, all the, everything that you've done for the-
But again, it wasn't my wife and I, it was people like John who's there the whole night, you know? You know, volunteering, Dr. Kelly, or Dr. Russell, you know, they were there the whole night, you know, it was just, it was a great honor for us to do that, we were just guiding them. They were the ones that, you know, like people like John, and, you know, everyone that, all the parents that volunteered, who, we just, we just told them what to do, and they did it. And the kids enjoyed it.
So, Mr. Gaspar, I want to say that you're showing the hallmarks of a great teacher and a great coach, and that is modesty. I know you like to say it wasn't me, but I think it's clear from what the naming committee has said and what we've heard, that it, that it is you. And so I know that's probably, you know, you're very, seem like a very humble person, but we're extremely grateful for what you have done and all the work you have put into this community, so thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll be in touch, you'll be back.
Alright, thank you again. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations, Steve.
It's worked out perfectly, that's nice. Alright.
Alright, so as we allow our basketball team to clear out, we'll move to the next item on our agenda.
Yep.
Which is a spotlight on kids for Joseph DeMello Elementary School. I'm carrying this out so they can talk over me, but-
That's right, here they come.
So, Dr. Gifford, you want to do introductions?
Yeah, of course. As you know, Ms. Piveo, Ms. Correa, here to speak about the wonderful things that continue to go on at the DeMello Elementary School.
That's a tough act to follow, I have to say.
It's heartwarming.
But good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to shine a spotlight on DeMello School. Liz and I always seem to come right on the heels of a change in what's happening in the COVID world, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have about that a little later on, but we really wanted to take this opportunity to not talk about COVID for just a minute, and instead focus on some of the amazing learning that's happening in our classrooms. We've done spotlights before on our students as readers and writers, and about them as citizens and PBIS, but we thought tonight we would take this opportunity to talk a little bit about our new math program, and give you a little peek into some of the really rich and rigorous work that our students are doing each and every day. So, I should have done that first. So, when we think about our students, beyond our students as mathematicians, we need to think about what our goals are for them, what we want them to be able to do when they leave us at the elementary level, and really, what we want them to be able to do as adults in all realms of life. There are six really kind of rich goals when we think about the skills that we want for our students as successful humans, who can get along in the world. And those are those critical thinking skills, those communication skills, creativity, problem-solving, perseverance, and collaboration. So what does that have to do with math? When we're planning lessons, often we root them in content standards, right, and we think about what do we want our students to know? And that's a really great place to start, what do we want our students to know? But when we focus only on content, what are we forgetting? So, when we focus on content, one of the things that we're not really emphasizing is the practice standards. And that's the part that circles back to those six skills that we just talked about. It's the what do we want them to be able to do piece of planning a lesson. Focusing on the practice standards is how kids show us that they're accessing those content standards. So when we talk about what we want them to know, these practice standards are how they can show us they know it. They're the skills that we want kids to possess to be successful in all areas of life. So this is what we're talking about when we're talking about, practice standards are not just about math. But Liz is gonna give you a little bit of how we develop our best practices for teaching.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice.
Sure.
So I just realized that when I put my glasses on with the mask, everything steams up, so I might squint a little bit, I think it's actually better that I keep my glasses off if I want to stay with the presentation. So, research tells us that there are very explicit teaching practices that are critical components of effective math instruction across grade levels. These practices include building procedural fluency on a strong foundation of conceptual understanding, engaging students in tasks that promote mathematical reasoning and problem-solving, providing students with opportunities and supports to engage in productive struggle, we love productive struggle, as they grapple with mathematical ideas and relationships. I think they've used some of our favorite words, just in that line, so important. Facilitating discourse among students to build shared understanding of mathematical ideas, using evidence of student thinking to assess the progress and adjust instructions in ways that not only support our students but extend their learning, and having teachers take a step back and become facilitators, and we've talked a lot over the years in Dartmouth about not being the sage on the stage, I think we've got that, and when it comes to math, we really want to have teachers support students and guide them as the students do the heavy lifting.
And so, we talk about all of that kind of rich stuff that we know needs to be present, and then we talk about this introduction of our Bridges Math Program. And so, we talk about how does Bridges, or does Bridges incorporate these content standards and these practice standards while using their best practices? So, to know a little bit about that, we give you a little bit of background information on Bridges. So, this is what really makes Bridges different from so many of the other programs that you'll see. Bridges was designed by the Math Learning Center, and they're not a publishing house, right, so there, therein lies the big difference, they're not trying to sell you something. They're a nonprofit organization that consists of teacher researchers dedicated to K-12 math education. The organization grew out of a National Science Foundation grant, and it was founded in 1976 by three math educators. And their mission was to inspire and enable individuals to discover and develop their mathematical confidence and ability. Their curriculum is inquiry-based, and it focuses on using visual models to develop mathematical thinking. So it's really kind of different than some of what we've seen in traditional math programming in the past, it really focuses, as Liz said, on that grappling piece, and on that inquiry piece, and on that sort of productive struggle, where rather than I'm gonna show you, it's, it kind of takes away a little bit, a step away from that "I do, we do, you do" that we've seen throughout the years, and we're just really kind of posing a problem and letting the kids use those critical thinking skills to figure it out, right? And we always kind of talk in really layman's terms about, when do you remember something? Is it when I tell you how to do it, or when you have figured it out for yourself through kind of trial and error and making those mistakes, that you really own how something is done? So Liz is gonna talk to you about the different components of the program, and then we'll get into the stuff that we really want to show you, which is kids doing it.
So if you were to walk through any classroom at DeMello School during the math block, you would see this year a rigorous blend of direct instruction, followed by structured investigation and open exploration. With Bridges, we have a program that consists of three main components, there's the number corner, problems and investigations, and workplaces. So as you'll see in a moment, we have videos that kind of highlight each component of the program. Number Corner focuses on skill-building through a classroom calendar and provides students with rich daily practice and repetitive encounters with broad mathematical topics. The problems and investigations portion of a Bridges lesson involves whole group activities and inquiries that also include opportunities for students to work individually, as well as with partners, and finally, workplaces is where they get to play with what they've learned. These are math stations that use fun and challenging games and activities that make the concepts they've, they've been working on and skills tangible to all students. Are you the next pager, or me? That's me. So we're gonna take a look at number corner. We're gonna let our second-grade students show you what a number corner looks like, and what I love about number corner is the students tend to lead it. So after a while of having it modeled for them, the students then kind of step up and take over number corner. And this number corner is about the 19th day of January. I hope you can hear this because it's fantastic, oh.
Victoria, can you tell us about what you're doing?
I'm counting them.
How many did you take out of the bucket?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Can anybody remind you why we're taking nineteen out of the bucket? Why are we taking nineteen, Evan?
It's the nineteenth day.
Nineteenth day. So let's look at the way Victoria's been organized, these nineteen squares that she's taken out for us. So Victoria, I'm gonna stop you for a second, is that all the red ones that you picked out?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's take a look at how many red she picked out.
Get in the red. I'm scary.
It's okay, it's hard to make the picture. So look at that nice line of red. Before she puts up the blue, I'm going to ask you to have a chat with your partner about this question. I gotta ask a question, you guys, so listen. Is it possible for Victoria to have a line of blue that's going to be exactly equal to that line of red?
No.
Why or why? Go.
No.
What do you think, folks? Yes or no? Why? Nice and loud. Nice and loud.
Because if she, there's only one line of blue, and they're going to be nine blues.
Do you agree? You do?
All right. And everybody come back to Victoria. Victoria, can you choose someone to explain why or why not they think that we can have exactly the same number of red and blue today?
Nathan, because I never pick.
So, Nathan, do you think yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, we can have the same number of blue and red today?
Actually, no.
Okay, please mind. Okay, because why?
Because you only need one, because nineteen is our number, and you only need one more to get to.
Okay, so it's an odd number today, so it's impossible for us to have two even columns if we have an odd number. All right, Victoria, you're done. Put up those blue ones.
In the second video, we have another student in the class explaining her thinking about Number Corner. Thank you.
Okay. You have your hand up. Okay, you. Because the blue has one more than the red. Except if the blue had minus one more, it would be even. So, the red is less than half. Because if you added one more red cube, it would be even.
You've really been listening lately. All right, Victoria, thanks for your help. I'm going to do some coloring in. It's hard to hear. You know, I don't want to make this big again. So, I hope we can, I don't know, figure that out. We're going to move on to some of the Problems and Investigations problems. Mr. Galishon's going to help me. It's okay, because I can make this big when I do it. Thank you. So, we talked about how a lot of the emphasis is on the visual models. And so, in this first video, this is a first-grade classroom that's learning about using the number line to add and subtract multiples of ten. And they use the help of their friend Polly, the frog, on the number line to help them with that. Can everyone say, "Good morning, Polly"?
Good morning, Polly.
All right. So, Polly is going to be jumping across our number line today. But I want you to look really close at our number line. We did this last week, but our numbers look a little different. What's different? Alan? They're counting by tens. My friends, can we count by tens to one hundred?
Yeah.
Are you ready? Go.
One, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, one hundred.
Okay, now, we're going to count from one hundred all the way back to zero by tens. You have to stay with Mrs. T. Are you ready?
One hundred, ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty, seventy.
Oh. You're staying with Mrs. T. Did I jump to fifty yet? I'm going to start all over.
One hundred, ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty, fifty, forty, thirty, twenty, ten.
Zero. All right, my friends. Mrs. T is going to ask you a question. And my question is, what number, if we're counting by multiples of ten, what multiple of ten would come after thirty? If we're counting by ten, what would come after thirty? Ryan?
Nine.
What would come after ten? Cooper?
Twenty.
What would come after ninety? Patrick? Ready to trick you? What would come before eighty? Johnson?
Forty.
Wow, I didn't see my answer.
What would come before ten? Corina?
Zero.
Stop, you're so smart.
Here we go. I have a story for you. Are you ready?
Yep.
One day, Polly woke up on the zero. Suddenly, she realized she was late to go swimming with her friends. She made four hops up to the forty. But she didn't see her friends anywhere. So, she made two more hops. Where did she land? I need someone to come up here and be nice to Polly. But I'm going to read the story again, and I want you to move Polly to match the story. Let's go with Isabel. All right, Isabel, listen to my story. You're going to move Polly as I say. Are you ready? One day, Polly woke up on the zero. Suddenly, she realized she was late to go swimming with her friends. She made four hops up to the forty. But she didn't see her friends anywhere. So, she made two more hops. Where did she land? Michael?
Six.
She landed on sixty. Oh, I was just changing her mind. She landed on sixty. Okay. But now, Mrs. T needs to write an equation to match what just happened. Where did Polly first jump to? What number? Ron?
Forty.
She jumped to forty. And then, where, how many did she jump? How many more did she jump? Oh, that's tricky question. How many more did she jump? Ryan? She jumped twenty times? She jumped twenty more times? She jumped two more times? Which, if we're counting by tens, how many is that? If you're jumping two times, each hop is by ten, how many would that be? Twenty. Nine steps. And where did she land? Sophia?
Sixty.
Nine steps. Um, but there are problems. What? I have a story. Polly helps us see that forty plus twenty equals sixty. But she didn't find her friends. She could hear them having fun in the water. So, she turned around and went back two hops, or twenty, back the other way. Where do you think she's going to land? Who's going to come up here and move Polly while I read the story again? Simon? You can tell on Polly? Pepper? Make sure you didn't push her. Listen to the story again. Polly helps us see that forty plus twenty is sixty, but she didn't find her friends. She could hear them having fun in the water. So, she turned around and went two hops, or twenty, back the other way. Where do you think she's going to land? Cooper?
Forty.
Nine steps. So, my friends, if Polly is on sixty, who can tell me an equation to match what just happened there? Corina? We're talking about, continue to talk about. We're talking about the use of equations. We're talking about the use of multiples. We're talking about flexible thinking going forward and backwards on a number line. And these are our littlest learners. These are our six-year-olds. And we watch that grow through the grades when we have kids using that use of multiples of ten to add on to big numbers. And it translates right through the grade levels to using number lines to do fraction work and to do decimal work. So, the other quick video we're going to show you is our third graders who are exploring volume and capacity. So, we talked a little bit about the structure of the lesson, where there's a little bit of a whole group explanation, and then the kids just sort of go off and explore. And so, this group of kids, their objective in this lesson was they had a lot of different containers that were all different sizes, and they had to estimate the capacity of the container. And then they had to measure it to kind of see where their estimation came out. I'm just going to show you these two munchkins on the left. I think you all had it emailed it to you. I think just for the sake of sound, the second one's going to be hard to hear, but you should listen to it if you have a minute because they come to this really great conclusion that that container that they were doing was 500 milliliters, and it's a thousand-milliliter measuring cup. And they measured it and realized that they didn't actually have to measure the 500 milliliters. They could have just realized how much they took out of the container and to see how much was left. So, it was really kind of thinking. But I am going to show you these two and hope that you can hear the sort of aha moment that she has. What do you think?
We were one hundred.
Okay, so write it on your actual. Can you say that again, Emma? What'd you just say? You got it, kiddo. That's the whole point of trial and error. And that's the message that we want our kids to have, is that there's going to be productive struggle, that you're not going to get it, you know, they were 100 milliliters off, and her partner there was kind of dismayed at the 100-milliliter difference. But she said, "You know what? That's how we're going to figure it out." And these two kids went on to make much more accurate predictions. So, Liz is going to keep moving forward and show you, again, I'm not sure on the sound, but this is an example of a Number Corner game. The objective of this game is kids are supposed to be creating two, three-digit numbers that the sum is as close to a thousand as they can guess. Just the first one? I think that one's probably clear.
Are you talking about what you just did? And nice and loud because it's muffled through the mask. All right, so I'm going to turn to Charlie and ask him what he did. What did you do with your numbers?
I basically did the same thing. We were both thinking, try to get ten in the back, nine, and then nine, to get exactly one thousand.
Who got the closest?
Both of us.
All right.
Really just playing with numbers. They had eight cards dealt to them, and they had to make two, three-digit numbers. It was just really kind of playing with numbers to get. And if you listen to the kiddos in that video, they talk about how they figured out that they had to try to have a group higher than ten in their ones column so that they could sort of do that regrouping piece into the tens and the hundreds place. And really, I think one of the things that Liz and I talk all the time about is just the discourse that kids are having around math, that it's not, you know, a traditional where we go and we learn an algorithm and we go and we do a worksheet with fifty problems of it, right? And then I see it in a real-world problem, and I don't really know how to apply it. The other kind of theme that goes through all of this is that sort of real-life application piece, whether it's a frog on a number line hopping to see her friends, or measuring water, which you may need to do. And one of the videos we didn't put in there was the discussion that the kids had at the beginning of that lesson. And the teacher asked them, you know, "Where do you see all of these capacity measurements in your life?" And the kids were naming all these different places in their homes that they used, that they might see these measurements. It was hysterical. One little guy was like very anxious to tell us that in his mom's wine fridge, that they have wine, and that's how they manage the wine. So, like, they're recognizing also just that sort of application piece, where that these are not just things that I do only in school in my math class, but these are things that really do apply to our lives in some capacity, way, shape, or form. I really hope that these are the ones that come out more than ever, though, because one of the, you know, it's one thing for Liz and I to talk about how we love hearing the kids talk about math and hearing, seeing the kids explore math. But we really wanted to hear from the kids what they love about math. I think I've always said I wear multiple hats at DeMello School, and one of them is of that as a parent. And my second grader tells me all the time that her best days are the days that they do double math, because math is just so fun. So, we have some other kiddos here who I hope you can hear tell you what they love about math.
Melania, what do you like about the math program this year?
Starting on math this year, with Bridges and Number Corner, I felt that I learned about it. And I like that you really get to express like different strategies. Because last year, you couldn't really do that much strategies, but this year, I can do a lot.
Fantastic. And what do you like about games, like the one you just played?
I like that it's really fun, and you get a big chance to win. And it's really exciting because you never know what you're going to get. And there's different ways to.
Games that she plays. She talked about Number Corner. She said, "So, Number Corner replaced, we used to have calendar math if you went into our classrooms, and it was, had a lot of really great components to it." But I think what is the addition to this is that strategy-based piece, where we're asking kids to really use different strategies. You could kind of dial that, get that when you were talking to the second graders, like, "How did you know that there weren't going to be the same number of red and yellow and blue columns?" And this is one of our fifth graders who I just, I could talk to all day. So, I hope you can hear him. So eloquent.
Starting on math this year with Bridges and Number Corner, I felt that I didn't understand it. But usually, I just wasn't using all my brain power. So, I agree with Sophia, as reaching tables did help us. And we were also learning how to add and subtract onto the number line. And as Maddie said, the number sentences came alive, almost as if Bella passed fifty burgers, and he had to divide them by ten. So, it came alive, almost so, like Maddie said, that we don't have to do thirty-six times twenty-five. So, I think I really understand math, and I'm really growing as a fifth grader.
So, I think, right from the mouths of babes, math comes alive, and they are able to understand it. And I love that he's talking about that sort of math on the number line, that thread that goes through, right? So, we see these kids learning this in the first grade. It goes all the way through to what they're doing in fifth grade. And Liz will wrap up talking about our teachers and their love of math.
So, this is from the same classroom that our friend in the last video was from. And in talking to teachers about the math program, we know that whenever there's an implementation year, there are struggles. But many of our teachers are seeing the benefits already. And what I love about what Mrs. Aguirre has to say is that even though she's a fifth-grade teacher, teaching the first year of this program, and there's a lot of backfilling involved, she can still see the value. The kids are really learning and kind of embracing it all, which is just a thrill. So, I'm hoping you can hear her. Just talk nice and loudly. All right, three, two, one.
So, even in the five months that we've been working with the Bridges program so far, it's already really easy to see that the students are taking these hands-on, inquiry-based lessons, and they're learning math, and they're learning self-confidence. So, they are really making strides with the program. The structure of the program is such that there are certain elements that repeat, such as workplaces, problem strings, investigations. And that allows students to get comfortable with these certain formulas and these certain constructs. And then they can really focus in on the math and see these same structures repeating throughout units. It also enables them to improve their math work and to work on skills like creative problem solving, collaboration, communication. And these are all things that are great for them in math and beyond. I could already tell that with the alignment of the program, as the years go on, the students will become more and more familiar with the elements. And again, that will enable them to focus more on the math. So, for example, this year, workplaces are something that are new to everybody. But next year, when the fourth graders come up to fifth graders, they'll already know the routines and the procedures surrounding workplaces, and they'll be able to do all that much better with the new content in math. So, based on the students' engagement so far and their great participation, I would say that this program is really being successful in helping them to become better young mathematicians.
Thank you.
So, I think the one last thing that Liz and I need to say is we would be completely remiss if we didn't give a huge shout-out to Jennifer Fitton, who is our math coach. remiss if we didn't give a huge shout out to Jennifer Fitten, who is our math coach. Because I will say unequivocally that we would not be in the position to have these kinds of great conversations about how wonderful things are going without the support she's been able to give our staff. So we've had a lot of after-school meetings. We've had a lot of common planning time that she has come in, she has gone in, she actually was teaching the number corner in that second grade lesson that you were listening to. She's modeled lessons for teachers. She's gone in and supported them. And really, I think that sort of what do you need approach that she's taken with the teachers has helped them to find the success that they've needed. So I would be, like, I would love to say that Liz and I, that has nothing to do with Liz and I, other than saying we hired a really great math coach. So we really are so grateful for that person who has really, really helped our staff. So I'm going to end it there and go back to that screen because that was my one and only job at the end. So I'll leave it there, but turn it back over to you for any questions that you may have for us.
Somebody have any questions or comments? Mr. Nunes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, ladies. Very interesting. And the only thing I have to say in all seriousness is I was absolutely thrilled watching the teachers get the student involvement. And, you know, and I don't mean dragging it out of them, but making it fun as if to say, you know, especially when they were doing the increments of 10 and she was going backwards and she stopped and they kept going type of deal. And nope, well, I will go back and start again type of deal. And how they worked at it and, you know, the student comment. So my hat's off. Nice job.
Other? Mr. Oliver?
No, I'll just, you know, say a lot of the same, you know, great job. I love to see the, you know, there's nothing better, especially in year, this year two of the pandemic, seeing the students interact in the classrooms with each other, with the teacher. You know, for me, that's just awesome. In addition, it seems as though, you know, we're long overdue for a new math program and it looks like this program is, looks like it's going to be paying dividends. And especially to see the engagement there. I think that's huge. So it was a great presentation. So I thank you both.
Ms. Amaral?
Yeah, this is wonderful. I miss you. But, you know, all of the things that this program seems to kind of touch upon in terms of just those good skills that can, you can, that, you know, can, across all environments really, that critical thinking, that teamwork, you know? And it's, I can imagine how this Bridges program is engaging even more students who might not have had, you know, that confidence to feel like they were a math person, right? Didn't like numbers or didn't understand numbers that kind of approaching it in this way, engaging and playing and working with and having that opportunity to, you know, that's so important to realize that we don't always all have to have the answer right away. But, you know, there's so much value in doing and learning how to figure things out on your, on your own. It's just wonderful. So thank you. This wonderful program. I was bummed when, you know, you stopped it. We have, I can listen to them now at home, but again, but yeah, just hearing the little voices and watching that fun classroom. You know, I want to, I don't really want to be in first grade again, but that did look like a lot of fun that I might want to volunteer if ever I had a day off. But great job. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Ms. Waite.
No, I just love the videos. They were so great. Thank you for that. You know, I know we have some auditory issues, but I, you know, just same thing, like seeing their faces. And I think, you know, to echo COVID, they're not on computers, you know, and they're have manipulatives that are, I love that, that they're going back and they have, you know, just every, it feels like the, you know, it's the merge of science and math. And I just, I love the physicality. And again, to see the teamwork and the excitement, I just, I feel like it's an infusion of what, even just even culturally they needed, you know, from their social, emotional needs. Like I just, and then just, you know, the real-life applications. I think these kids, you know, I felt like the other program, again, we saw kids coming through that really had improved number sense, you know, and I think that was what we had been working on as a district and I was impressed. But I think this even, you know, to echo what Ms. Amaral said, like takes it to that other level where, you know, you're really going to have these kids who, you know, because it looks like they're feeling like they're playing games. And I thought that, you know, that's really exciting and, you know, and then taking the ownership and, you know, realizing that mistakes are part of the journey and all of those things I think were, it's really cute. And I love DeMello and I think you guys just do such a great job. So I'm totally biased, but yeah.
Evan, you have anything you want to add?
I thought it was great. I loved watching it. Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, and I'll just add, I think, you know, it can be popular today to decry sort of the new math education and conceptual understanding. But, you know, as someone who learned to love math and found my ways to conceptual understanding of math in spite of the instruction that I received, it warms my heart to see kids starting right away because that conceptual understanding is so fundamental to future math. And I know it can be unpopular because the homework comes home to us and we don't know how to do it because it doesn't resemble the way that we were taught math. But I think we're going to have a generation of kids who have learned to enjoy math and who are engaged in it as opposed to seeing it as, you know, a subject to dread. And so I'm really excited to see that focus on that conceptual math and developing that deep understanding as opposed to that rote memorization. It's really great. So thank you.
And I love when they do get to that algorithm piece, right? And they can understand, they can explain it. But they go, oh my God, this is so much more efficient. And we can have those conversations about efficiency and why that works, but they understand what they're doing, right? As opposed to like just carry the one or whatever. You had no idea what you're doing.
Right.
But they do. And to Mary, to your point with the integration of science, if you watch that other video with the kids doing water, it's so sweet because at one point you hear one of the kids off-camera say something about science and he goes, well, this kind of like is science. And so it's very sweet. But they are definitely hands-on and enjoying it. So thank you for this opportunity for us to kind of highlight. I'm sorry that the sound was not great, but you are all welcome to come walk through any classroom you'd like at any time and see it in the flesh. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Alright, so the next item on our agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, is the proposed 2022, 2023 calendar under Old Business. Does anybody have any comments or questions about the proposed school calendar?
We had this last meeting, so.
Yeah. Do we need to vote to, so I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed school calendar.
So move.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Amaral. Is there any further discussion on the calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion, oh Evan, I forgot to ask you if you had any comments about the calendar. I'm sorry.
No, I don't have any.
I have to put you over there because I look this way. I'll remember that next time. Or next time, just stand up and wave if I forget. I'm sorry. Alright, so the next item under Old Business is the MASC Resolution Regarding the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education School District Audits. I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Oliver. You want to speak about this since you took the lead on this one?
Sure, absolutely. And I hope everyone had a chance to look it over.
I can read it. I have a copy if people don't have it, but I think everyone has it.
I sent it to Kate late this afternoon.
Okay, great.
So I think it was back in December, several meetings back, where Dr. Gifford was discussing the concerns amongst the educational community that Desi is, seems like they're going full in with program review audits and different types of audits in all the school districts. And that's simply because, you know, for a long time there, they weren't, I think they weren't doing it or that, you know, they weren't, they were working remotely. But nonetheless, they may have the time right now to conduct these audits across the state. And where we see it as a problem, where Dr. Gifford was saying with her association is that these audits are extremely time, huge time commitment as well as a, from a human capital commitment. And it pulls, it pulls staff away for interviews. It, you know, there's a, and there's a number of hours that are involved in these things. So everyone remembers that we had a discussion amongst us and I said, you know what, what do we look at? I'll take the lead on trying to put together a resolution that we can send to our state reps, Department of Education, maybe the governor's office, and anyone else that you seem, would seem fit. This is what I came up with. It's obviously open to criticism or anything you want to add, take away. But I'll read it out publicly. Whereas the Dartmouth School Committee understands the need for state oversight and audits through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the benefits of program review audits. Whereas these audits are significant time and human capital commitment to the Dartmouth Public Schools and other public school districts across the state. And whereas school districts are already being pushed to their limits to ensure students are educated and there are faculty not quarantined and in place to support our students in schools during the global COVID-19 pandemic. Therefore, be it resolved that the Dartmouth School Committee is asking for moratorium in these program review audits until such time that faculty and staffing are at normal levels and time won't be taken away from the education of our students in the Dartmouth Public Schools.
Comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
So I just have one sort of comment concern question. It's the second to the last line. Right? We have the norm, I don't want to imply that we have non-normal numbers of faculty in our buildings, right? Because we have teachers in our buildings. Do you know what I'm saying? So I know our substitute levels are low and so that's, and we have some people out with COVID, but that seems to imply that they're, they're not, like, I don't want to cause concern among the community that we're like not appropriately covering our classes, I guess is what I'm saying. And so I don't know if we want to say, you know, until next year, for two years. I don't know. I'm just raising the question as an item for discussion. Mr. Nunes.
Well, could you, right there where it says at.
Could we say like?
Could you put at?
Pre-pandemic?
Pre-pandemic normal, pre-pandemic. Wow, say that.
I know what you mean.
Wow, pre-pandemic levels?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's, I mean.
I mean, I get what, I get what Mr. Oliver's getting at, right? We're stretched thin. But at the same point, Tom, I don't want to create the impression that we are not adequately covering our classrooms. Because we are. It's hard, but we are, right?
Yeah. I mean, students, students are learning, but I mean.
Yes.
And I, I think if you look in the contents of it, this is also relating to school, all 351 school districts in the Commonwealth and vocational schools and such.
Right.
So there may be some that may not be at normal levels.
Right.
So.
This is, this is.
It's a catch 22.
Yeah. Ms. Waite.
What if we said, and again, I'm just writing right now, until the current health crisis has passed and state adjustments to protect public health care are no longer in place in the public schools or something in that?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Can you?
Yes, I did it quickly because I was just jotting down as we're talking. So it says, until the current health crisis has passed and state adjustments to protect public health in the public, well, public health are no longer in place. But we could adjust and say something about public schools or protect.
So where is, where are you putting that?
So this is until such time that instead of, and we would be getting rid of that, faculty and staffing are at normal levels and time won't be taken away from the education of our students. We would be replacing it with.
So you're going to get rid of faculty and staffing all the way?
I mean, I basically think what we want to say is until the pandemic is over.
Right.
Correct.
Right? That's what we want to say in fancier words.
Exactly.
Ms. Amaral?
Well, I just, again, similarly, but just a little bit more succinct, until faculty and staffing are less vulnerable to the potential impact caused by, and I didn't finish that sentence, I just wanted to get that. You know, just that we're vulnerable to it every day at any moment, although we are covered. I don't know. I just thought that might be a little bit less, I don't know.
Alright, let's take a second to think about this.
Nice job, Chris, though.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. It's, I mean, it's excellent. I think, I guess what I would say is what we're really trying to say too, is that we could be at normal staffing limits, but Dr. Gifford and Mr. Kylie could be spending their whole day contract tracing, right? Even though we're at norming, we're at normal staffing levels, right? So what we want to say is until our faculty and staff are not wiped out by other pandemic-related duties, right? Like, or until we're back to normal. And so it's kind of there, but I think we might want to say it.
Until our superintendent and assistant superintendent of finance are doing their normal job.
Their normal jobs, right? Yeah. You know.
Want to come back to this next week after edits? It's up to you.
Well, I mean, I think the other thing that we could do is we could just sort of approve it and empower Mr. Oliver to make minor, I mean, it's not like this is like a bylaw that is going to bind future generations for 50 years.
Yeah.
I might be comfortable to say if we, if Mr. Oliver, if you would mind making some minor edits to that and then we can just send it along.
I'll take your recommendations, put them together and.
Yeah, I mean, and basically I think we're all in agreement that what we want to say is until, like, put these on hold until the pandemic's over.
Yeah, agreed.
Right? So, alright.
I'm going to get work.
And they show up back in the office.
Right. Right? Alright, so we have a motion on the table. Are you okay with us sort of adjusting or making an amendment to that motion or how you want to handle this, Mr. Nunes?
Well, if Chris is going to bring it back, how about if I withdraw my motion till the next meeting?
Okay.
Would that work?
But let me, let, but let's withdraw, you're going to withdraw your motion. And let me suggest we do another motion. I would like to entertain a motion to approve, to approve, to empower Mr. Oliver to make amendments to the statement as presented and to send it along to our representatives and the governor and so on and so forth, per our discussion. Would that work?
That'll, that's fine. So I'll, Madam Chair, I will withdraw my motion. I'll withdraw that for, my first motion.
Okay, so Mr. Nunes has withdrawn his motion. So I will now entertain a motion as described for Ms. Gunther, that we empower Mr. Oliver to make minor revisions per our discussion to the motion and send it off to our state reps, the governor, Desi. So move. Alright, so I have a motion by Ms. Waite.
Second.
Second by Ms. Amaral. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so that carries unanimously. Alright, so the next item under Old Businesses' discussion of the Dartmouth logo, both Mr. Nunes and Mr. Oliver requested that we put this on here. And this is the point, I will say, that I fall on my sword. We were sort of moving along as a committee. The committee had plans to invite representatives from local tribes. We had an email from Mr. Ventura, Mr. Andrews, and Ms. Andrews. I had spoken with some representatives of the American Congress of, I think the American Indian, I think it is called. And so we were going to have, the committee was going to invite sort of Native, some Native American representatives to come talk to the committee. Then, like, work got crazy and then the pandemic kept happening. And then we were into holidays and so that hasn't happened because I haven't been able to connect with Mr. Ventura. He and I have been exchanging emails. I asked for some dates. He got back to me later and then those dates didn't work. And then we, so we went back and forth a few times. It is the intention of the, of the diversity committee, and I need to pick that up, is to schedule that hearing with the sort of Native American groups and then also to do a public comment and hearing. So two separate sessions. I think the semester has started. I can get that moving along if the committee desires. The other thing that we can talk about is whether or not we want to do those sessions jointly with the diversity committee. Those are open meetings that we have to post. So we can post them that the school committee is going to be there as well if we wanted to do them together. I think that was also the time when we were in transition from Zoom meetings to in-person meetings and then also the transition from not being open to the public to being open to the public. And so all that happening made it a little difficult to figure some things out. Kathleen, you were going to add some to that, Amaral?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that while you're taking, you know, dying on that sword, I essentially was the vice chair of that committee. And so I, as well. I essentially was the vice chair of that committee, and so I, as well, just, you know, life and, you know, a memorandum for, please forgive us for dropping the ball here, but I was able to have some nice conversations with, with Mr. Ventura, although I think he was waiting for me to get back to him about something, just, you know, COVID quarantine and, and all things considered, all of what you said is, is accurate, I think.
So, I guess we can ask, Mr. Oliver, Mr. Nunes, both of you are on the agenda, interested to hear your thoughts, but also, also, the question I have would, would we want to schedule it as a joint meeting, or just as a meeting of the Diversity Committee if we're inviting some of our Native American tribal neighbors to come? So, thoughts, questions, comments?
Well, what I would like to see, Madam Chair, to be perfectly honest with you, is that this subject, in, in all seriousness, just be put to bed tonight, okay? I mean, I don't think there's, in my personal opinion, is to, to, to drag this on, this is something that's been going on for, now on three years, from the best part of my, at least two and a half, a lot closer to, to three years, I mean, I found some notes at home from October of 19. So, I mean, personally, I, I would just like to see this committee reaffirm the Dartmouth Indian as its, as its logo, and if we need to have discussions with the Wampanoag tribe and their representatives, I'm good with that, but I think that's what we need, we need to do at, at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So when was the last time, Dr. Gifford, that you had any kind of conversations with Chairwoman Cheryl Andrews?
It was only that one time, I don't remember if it was the beginning of this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think-
Beginning of the school year.
Yeah, I, I don't know the date, but it was a couple of months ago, when, when the committee had been meeting quite regularly, and we had that conversation, yeah.
So, so I guess I, I share some of the same sentiment as Mr. Nunes, as this is something that's been going on for, for quite a while now, back and forth, and we're, the school department is in this limbo, and the sports teams and everything else, and I think the bottom line here is that the tribe has asked, asked the town, the select board, the school committee, the town as a whole, to engage in conversations with them, and I think it's important that we do that. So I guess from, from my point of view is, I, I'd just like to see us reaffirm the Dartmouth Indian, along with continuing to engage the tribe in meaningful discussions. But we need, at, at some point in time, we, we need to move on, and I just feel as though it's getting to be that time.
So I just want to add, I'm going to add my thoughts, I'm going to take prerogative of the chair now, right? Dartmouth is not part of the territory of the Gayhead Aquina Wampanoag, and there's another federally recognized tribe in Massachusetts that has stated their opposition to the use of Native mascots, the Mashpee Wampanoag, who are actually territorial closer to us than the Gayhead Wampanoag. Additionally, the Pocasset Wampanoag claim Dartmouth as part of their ancestral and territorial lands. I have had communication with council members of the Pocasset Wampanoag, and they are opposed to the use of the Indian. So, I cannot in good faith affirm the use of the Indian mascot when I've had members of recognized tribes that have just as much claim to the use of our mascot as the Gayhead Wampanoag, and have told me that they are opposed to it. I will also not, I cannot, as, as, as a member of this committee, vote to have this decision without hearing from the community. Ms. Wait, and then Ms. Ammaral.
Yeah, so I guess one of my, my thoughts on this is that we had committed to this committee, that they were going to, we were going to use the committee, and that's why we appointed the committee to study this in depth and to invite all of those opinions, so we can hear those, and this committee would be for us to become, in essence, an expert committee that we can lean on. So I'd really like to see that process be expedited and honored. So, until, you know, whether or not we decide if we want to sit in as a group, you know, on that next set of meetings, you know, I think that is a separate, you know, article for discussion, but I want to honor the process, because I think that's what we had said that we would do. I agree that we need to expedite it, I think it's difficult, again, COVID has thrown a wrench into everything, but I do want to honor that process, because that's how we agree to proceed. So, and again, in understanding that it wasn't just about the name, the mascot, but also about a host of other topics and diversity inclusion issues, so, and again, that's kind of where I'm coming from. So I'm not ready to make a decision, because I don't want to devalue our commitment to that committee that we set up, so.
Ms. Ammaral.
Mary, just, the last part of your statement was what I was going to lead with, in terms of, you know, the Diversity and Equity Committee and Inclusion Committee, what is about many more things that happen to be, I can't remember from the notes, but I think it was just the, what came to a head or voted upon as far as like, taking first, but it is bigger than this topic. And back in, in 2019, where I made the mistake, I think I was overwhelmed with a different set of issues back then, but, or misunderstood, whatever it was, but I would love to engage in, I think dialogue and conversation is so important, and folks, no matter what, if folks weren't, we, if, if I didn't lead from a place of welcoming, because I remember we had difficulty communicating, and, and who's going to take us seriously if we were approaching it from one way or bias on one, one side or the other, but I think it's really important that we, we invite and, and we, we welcome the opportunity to talk to folks and to just dialogue more and, and hear from the community. I mean, I, I hear from the community, and I hear, hear what, what this is, and I just think, I want to engage in conversation about this more myself, I think it's important that we have, you know, in the disability community, it's like nothing without, you know, nothing about us without us, and who am I to say, right? But I, I, I want to hear from, from everyone. I don't feel prepared to, one way or the other, say no or yes, vote no or yes tonight, but I do want it, I do want to proceed from a place of welcoming all opinions and all conversation and hearing directly from, you know, our, our Native American friends. So, that's important to me, I think this is an opportunity to sort of get it right and be a little bit more thorough and well-rounded, so that's my thought tonight.
All right, any other discussion, comments? Mr. Oliver.
I would just like to ask that we, there's some kind of timeline set, and, you know, when this committee was first put together, I, I think part of it was my idea, was the fact that it was going to be more than just the Dartmouth Indian, it was going to be diversity, right? It was going to be all those different pieces to it, and in the paper and all that we're hearing about is the Dartmouth Indian. So we, we need to really get through this, we need to make a decision on it, and then we need to move forward and put this behind us, because this does come up every three or four years. So this committee, at some point in time, needs to take a vote, either yea or nay, on how we're going to handle the situation. And then the committee, the Diversity Committee, needs to move on and start, let's start looking at other issues, because it, it's just, it's a long path to go.
I understand that, but I'm just going to say, it's been a rough year for all of us, and, you know, I volunteered to chair that committee because it has to comply with open meeting law, and so really, Ms. Ammaral and I were the only ones who can do that, and I just have too much on my plate. I have a full-time job, I have kids that have issues, I'm chairing the school committee, chairing the Diversity Committee was once straw too many. I'm going to do the best I can, but if we want a timeline, then I need help.
This isn't personal, Madam Chair, this isn't personal.
What I'm, what I'm saying is if we need a timeline, I need help. I need help, I can't manage it all. So if someone would like to help me move the process along, they're welcome to come and talk to me about how they can help me manage it. It's just, I think, I think Ms. Ammaral's in the same boat, it's been hard on all of us, and it's, it's just one too many.
Are you looking to step down, or, as chair?
I just need help moving the process forward, because I exchanged, I would say, five or six emails with Mr. Ventura, giving him dates, this and that, and he would say, I'd want to talk first, I don't have time to talk right now, can you tell me what dates work? And by the time we'd get back to each other, those dates would have passed, and so I'd ask for, and it just, I, I can't manage the scheduling, the posting, the, all of that, I've got to do that for this, I've got to do it for that, I've got to reach out to all of the people who, who want to be involved, it's a lot. I don't need to step down, I need support.
But at some point, Madam Chair, you, I completely respect and I understand where you're coming from, but maybe we, we tamper it down a little bit, because there's, there's like, you just named a dozen moving pieces to this, and as a committee, why can't we look at making a recommendation to, all right, just set a couple of dates up, I understand what you're trying to do, Shannon, and I certainly appreciate it, bringing in, trying to be thoughtful from, from all the sides, I, I, I respect that, but it's all time, it's, it's all, it's time consumption, it's time that not a lot of us have. So, tell us what you need, do you just need help?
Yeah, I need help doing the, the scheduling and the arranging, and there are about three or four groups that we need to find a collective date for them to come and speak to the committee, right? It's not just the Gayhead Wampanoag, it's the Mashpee Wampanoag, it's the Pocasset Wampanoag, the American Congress of, of the American Indian would like to speak, because they represent tribes in Massachusetts as well. So I've got four groups that I'm trying to coordinate and get ahold of and nail down dates for, and that's tough. Particularly when sometimes people take a week and a half to respond to your emails.
Why aren't we just talking to the two federally recognized tribes?
Because the terr, the, none of their territory overlaps with the town of Dartmouth. The Pocasset Wampanoag are recognized by the state for a variety of state programs, and the Pocasset Wampanoag claim Dartmouth as part of their territorial lands.
I understand that, but they're not federally recognized.
I will, I will not exclude the tribe for whom Dartmouth is their native land. And if we want to move forward with excluding the tribe that claims Dartmouth as their native territory, I think there's a problem, I think we're not being inclusive.
I'm not going to start having this conversation now, that's all I have.
Ms. Ammaral?
No, I was just, because I, I know there was a lot of back and forth, and, and I'm, I've been of no help, but it, could it be something that we, you know, we're thinking of, of convening with tribal folks from a variety, and then on a separate occasion, or on this, I can't remember, with the community in terms of like-
Two separate events.
Okay, would it be, I know, like, we've, I know exactly, I'm living it, but would it be helpful if we were to just set a date us here now, enough in advance that maybe one representative from each of those groups could make it? Would that be helpful? I, I can be very organized, but my life is chaos too, and, you know, there's a workforce crisis, and I don't have help for my son, it's either my husband or I, it's my husband's birthday tonight, happy birthday, but, so, I don't know if it's, for me, if I have a date in advance, I can make arrangements in time so that either myself or somebody can speak for me with, would that be helpful? Would that, would that-
Fortunately, you know, if you could have made the last meeting and we had the privilege of seeing you on TV.
Right, so if you can't make it in person, you could, right, right.
You know, that, that type of, but I agree with you, you know, sit down, figure out some dates.
Far enough away, but not too far away.
Not too far, you know, and to be honest with you, I would say, you know, sometime beginning of March, okay, give everybody a chance, type of deal, and that, because, you know, the city is starting to try to figure out how you get, we're going to be getting into February school vacation, that type of deal, so if we get into the beginning of March, there's enough time to look at this and say, on a Tuesday night, and I'm just going to, and I don't know March dates, so please, don't somebody, you know, March 2nd is a Tuesday night, now, I have no idea.
It's a Wednesday, you were close, Mr. Nunes, that's very good.
Okay, but, you know, my, that, so March 1st is that, and that's when we're going to have that meeting to have a discussion, you know, invite everybody, here's the date, if you can make it, fine, if you can't, sorry, but-
Send a representative?
Send a representative, you want to send a written statement, it can be read into the record per se, and, and we just move on.
All right, do we want to go with March 1st?
No, I won't be here.
You won't be here?
No. The second week in March would be better.
How about March 8th?
Works for me, I think, that seems so.
March.
We have a meeting the night before, so we can do that, the 8th as well.
March 8th works for me.
March, March 8th works for me.
Same.
Okay, so we'll set it with March 8th. I will work, Ms. Gunther, if you could help me sort of manage some of this, our guests that are coming, and we'll post the agenda, if, if we can do that, I will get the people who need to be there.
If you want me to reach out to anyone, Shannon, I will be more than happy to.
All right.
It'll be good to, I think, to have parameters set up prior, because it could go on all night, you know, I mean, like, what we're expecting.
So what we're doing on the 8th, we are just asking sort of tribal members, we had a presentation from a group before, and I think they did about 15 minutes, and then 15 minutes for Q and A. I think if we've got three or four groups coming in, telling them, I don't think we use 15 minutes for Q and A, but telling them a 10 to 15 minute presentation is, is fine, if they want to circulate materials in advance, that's fine too, that, but I think we can sort of set the same parameters that we, we used previously. Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, I'm sorry, I should have moved my hand, I apologize. If they've got information that they're going to be talking about, if they can provide it ahead of time so that-
Yes.
We've got it, that would be help, that would be helpful.
Sure, Ms. Wait.
So then, should we set the next date, because I know we've talked about a whole, you know, different set of folks that we want to have come in for a public comment, do we want to set that date now, or do we want to wait until, you know, we've heard from this first group before? I'm just thinking in terms, again, getting this process moving forward, do we want to, you know, because then we could, if we wait too long, then we could hit April vacation, you know, again, and it just becomes like one of the-
So, we had two volunteers on the committee, Ms. Chamberlain and Ms. Murphy, who are willing to help set up some parameters for a public comment. We had been waiting, I think what happened is we waited for the decision about when these were going to, because it's, I'm not going to try to do a public comment meeting on Zoom, like, just, no.
No, 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 no.
So we were waiting for that decision, but then the idea was, is that we would set up two podiums, so that we could go back and forth, right? So that would allow, if you're one side in favor of the mascot, one side opposed, we could go back and forth, and that would allow us to, so if we want to set a date for that, we can, I, I think we could enlist Ms. Chamberlain and Ms. Murphy to help arrange that, since they volunteered to do that. We could do it two weeks after that meeting, that would put it on 3/22.
I'm sorry, and what was the time for the 8th? What are we saying for a time?
I cannot make it before 6:30.
So, 6:30?
Yeah. And I think we could do the same for, if the 22nd works for people.
Yep.
All right, so I will work with Ms. Gunther and the, the Diversity Committee, and we'll move forward with making arrangements for that. Any further discussion on the issue? Ms. Ammaral?
I just want to say thank you to everyone, that was really a great way to kind of wrap it in and, and put a date to it, and I may not be good-
I think that was actually your idea, wasn't it?
Well, I, I do tend to come in, you know, in other capacities for like the, let's just end this now and make our motion, but yeah, I just want to thank everyone for, for that, see, because it has been very difficult, it's hard to sort of explain, and, but everyone's living it, and, you know, I just, we're just, so much going on, just like we're saying, asking for grace during that, your, I can't even think of the word, about us being audited two different ways and all that, that resolution, we just have to give you- We just have to give each one another grace to just, and the understanding that we're all going through difficult stuff and we can only do our best. So I appreciate the teamwork that just happened.
Thanks, Ms. Ammaral. All right, moving on to new business, school choice. So Dr. Gifford, now you had some data, I think, to share with us about school choice.
Yeah, between Mr. Kylie and myself, we just want to say that we support the going, continuing with school choice. As you see, we have currently 123 students enrolled. I did check with Mr. Tebow again, and he's in full support of continuing the program. Said the students have all done well and participate as active members of the community. And it's been a good program for us. So I think Mr. Kylie wanted to go over a little bit of the spending or what's been going on with that.
Sure. So those students represent about $600,000 in revenue. That is used for a variety of purposes. I gave you some detail about that. Through the years, it's supported, the largest project that it's supported is the One-to-One Computing Initiative. We've been fortunate this year to have some other sources of funding for One-to-One Computing relating to the pandemic and everything. So we haven't had to rely on, on school choice monies for those heavily. But it's been there for that. It's been there to support the stadium project, which I just, I will mention in the superintendent's update later tonight, as well as a whole variety of initiatives, K through, K through 12, that, you know, have supported kids and activities that we think are valuable. So we'd like to continue to do that.
Any questions, comments?
No.
Nice mistake.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to participate in school choice for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Wait, a second by Mr. Oliver. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Got to keep remembering. Sorry, Evan, to look this way, make sure.
Yeah, I have no comment on this.
Okay, good. You guys have to let me know if you see Evan over there going like this, looking this way. Sorry.
Evan, if we ignore you, just yell.
All right. So hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So that motion carries 4 to 1. Thank you. Next item on the agenda under new business is the annual report. Dr. Gifford.
I just want to say thank you to everyone in the leadership team, all the directors, et cetera, principals, admin that participated in getting the report to you. And I do hope you have time to read it because it's very thorough and it does explain a lot of what has been going on, which you know everything anyway. But it just is a nice report. So we'll take a vote on that. Would be much appreciated.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2021 annual report.
So moved.
All right. So a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Wait. Any discussion?
Just a nice job.
Ms. Ammaral?
I just, I, I'm so, I was, I read through this actually a couple of times. I felt like I needed to do my due diligence because I've been feeling like such a slacker. But all of the effort that was put forth, I've highlighted in different colors. I had one question, which it's not really, it's not a critical question. It's just a question that I should probably know. But under like the special ed circuit breaker money, it says like, I think, well, this year, I don't know if it's this year, not last year. We had like 37 students. It said something about 106,941, like special indicator funding. Does that ring a bell? I was just wondering what that was.
Mrs. Ammaral, was that in the, in the special ed section?
Yes. And I looked at it from, and maybe what you're going to tell, you're probably going to tell me I'm looking at the wrong thing here. But, well, it's fiscal year '22. So yeah, it maybe, it's under, well, it's under like Desi's spreadsheet. Well, it's, yeah, where am I? Right here. Special, oh, special indicator, oh, okay, never mind. Maybe I answered my own question. Indicate, well, special indicator instruction and tuition. But it was just, not every district has anything, you know, a number in that line. So I just was wondering, but I guess it's just a tuition and it's none of my business.
I wouldn't say that. I can get you some more information about that.
Mr. Nunes, did you have a question or a comment?
No, just a comment. Yeah, I didn't print it out. I read through it type of deal. And I agree with the superintendent. Nice, you know, hats off to the administrators and everybody for, and to Mr. Kylie for the financial information and all the general information that's in there. Go back and look at, you know, even though there was a pandemic, it's, you know, everything that went on. And, you know, you moved, you know, fall sport, you know, became fall too. And, you know, how our athletes did and, you know, then you get into the, to the music and all the other sports and the different schools and what was going on, you know, between phys ed and, you know, classroom teaching. You know, we had a nice presentation tonight, you know, with the Dellow School. So, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into it and, you know, I applaud everybody for doing that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Just thank you.
All right. So hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That motion carries unanimously. Dr. Gifford, time for the superintendent's update.
Okay, just a couple of things. As we mentioned, we're still continuing without audits until maybe Desi will say no, but I don't think so. I don't have much faith in that. So we've just been continuing to attend webinars on how to go about completing the audit and all of that. The ELL one was just last week, the tiered focus monitoring and that. So a number of folks have been attending those. I told you last time that Cushman School had been awarded another $2,000 from the Feinstein Group. Well, now they have another 5,000. Their ticket was picked. I guess they pick one from all the schools every week. This foundation is incredible. And also Potter School received $5,000. So we have a lot to be thankful for, for the Feinstein organization. We did start the, well, we've put out for the, I told you that we got the FY22 Math Acceleration Academy's grant. I think I sent you that in an email for $92,500. And we'll be running camps, February and April vacations for four days. And we've already posted for those folks that will be teaching and as well as supervising. And it will be six, six elementary session people. Middle school, we're looking at two. High school, we don't think we'll get a lot of people, kiddos that want to attend during vacation, but we're trying. And of course, we'll have some special area teachers as well. So those postings have gone out and we've gotten a lot of interest from teachers. So I was happy about that. And as much as we were thinking we didn't want to do that because we didn't think we'd get enough people, but we are so far. And as Evan mentioned tonight, we were really happy with the AP Computer Science Award. I sent that to you with, and as you remember, we started the work a couple of years back with really enhancing the pathway for computer science. And then we hired the teachers and really kind of honing in on what should be taught and that. So we were happy about that. And also attendance has kind of been back to normal-ish, I guess, you know? Not as bad as it was a couple of weeks ago, so we're happy about that. And just an update on the COVID at-home testing program, which you're aware of. We, I have to say, at this time, Desi, of course, they probably have a lot of help, unlike us, usually, with implementing the new testing program. We submitted it. We were approved. Tests are supposed to be starting to be shipped this week. We, we've received about 1,000 people between students and faculty that have signed up that they would opt in, they would want to participate. And as we said, the tests will go home for two weeks at a time. The schools, I've met with them and they are working logistics on how they'll be passed out to the students and staff. And we're asking that folks commit to testing themselves on Sundays to hopefully keep COVID out of the schools. And there's a, Desi did a nice job with the spreadsheets that we're able to get the data from and also that folks would then report in if they are positive. That's what we hope. So with that, I know Mr. Kylie wanted to give a few updates as well, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. Just a quick update on the stadium storage project, storage building project. So that, you had awarded that some time ago. We're, we're in process, definitely facing long lead times and which, you know, I think we would expect unfortunately. But it's going to be a long drawn out project. We're in the process of trying to complete the design work for the rest of that project with the hope that we would bid it out this spring and see what happens. I don't expect that it's going to be particularly favorable, but it's important that we understand what the, what the situation is and then try and determine, okay, can we move forward with the rest of the project at this point in time? Or do we need to come up with some other strategy? So that's all in the works, but I have a meeting about that again tomorrow. The other thing I just wanted to mention was that at the next school committee meeting, we'll be presenting the budget for FY23. So we will, we hope to, we definitely will, prior to that time, have a budget subcommittee meeting. So I believe that Dr. Jenkins and Mrs. Ammaral are the two members on the budget subcommittee. So, and I think Mr. Nunes is the alternate, I believe. So, so there's lots of support. So at some point prior to that February 14th meeting, we'll, we'll try and arrange for something. And I'll just be in touch with you about that and see if we can find a time that'll work. And we'll invite a member of the finance committee to that meeting and, you know, have a little discussion about where we're heading for the 14th, so.
Ms. Wait.
Yes, I just had a question. And this goes back to when we had our presentation from the New Bedford vocational folks. We had talked about possibly doing a stabilization fund. I think Mr. Oliver had brought that up just to kind of give us some leeway when we're trying to deal with the fluctuations from year to year. I don't know, you weren't able to attend that meeting.
I listened to it. I watched it on YouTube.
So I thought that was, you know, a good suggestion. So I thought I'd circle back on that.
Yeah, yeah. I can bring that up to, you know, to the folks at Town Hall. That stabilization fund, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't have anything to do with Dartmouth Public Schools. It would be in relation to a town stabilization fund with a reserve for vocational, you know, education costs. So that would be something that would have to be initiated really from the select board side of things or the finance committee, I suppose. But I will bring that up to them.
Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things, Mr. Kylie. One being, help me, help me remember here, the, we actually awarded the storage building.
Yes, we did.
So is that, are we still moving forward with that or are we going to, with that award?
Yeah, right now, we are trying to procure the, the materials.
Okay.
It's, takes a long time.
Yeah, I just thought there might have been some conversation about whether or not the developer, the contractor might have pulled, was thinking about backing out.
No, no, they're, they're on board, met with them last Wednesday, been meeting with them weekly.
Okay.
Going to meet with them this Wednesday. They're on board.
That makes me feel better.
It's a test of patience.
Yeah, the supply chain is what it is. But I just wasn't sure where we were at with the, with the contract.
Metal buildings aren't the best thing to be ordering right now, unfortunately. And I think metal itself is a problematic item.
Sure, agreed. And just along those lines of facilities and construction and all that, I had asked a couple, like before Christmas, and asking for the committee's pleasure on whether or not we could bring Mr. Richard Ferrera, Rick Ferrera, at one of our next school committee meetings to recognize him for not only the work he's done for the Dartmouth schools, but, you know, for the police station and a lot of other buildings and facilities in town.
Thank you for that reminder, Ms. Oliver. I think we're all in agreement. We'd like to do that. Other questions or comments? Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just one, Mr. Kylie, have you heard about a capital planning committee meeting?
I just mentioned to Dr. Gifford today that we'd yet to hear anything regarding that, which is pretty far behind schedule. But I know that on the town side of their operation, they are attempting to give people more time to complete their different tasks, be it the budget or the capital improvement submissions. But I have yet to, yet to hear about a meeting.
Okay, all right. If you do.
I will keep you informed.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is the report of the chair. I just want to give you all an update. I just sent right at the beginning of this meeting. We're not going to discuss them tonight. I just, I don't like to give information via email because of open meeting law. But I sent you three links to sample student advisory committee policies. For your reference, the policy is J-I-B-B. If anyone wants to Google it. Some school districts have it, some don't. I sent you examples from Milton, Hull, and North Reading. Milton and Hull are kind of generic restatements of the state law. I also asked Worcester, she said, well, it's very clear that you have to elect by class. And I was like, it's not clear. It's not in there. So that's when I started Googling. The one from North Reading, I would recommend that you read. That has actual procedures, like the, I'm not, I'm not entirely convinced that the procedures make sense because they say there's an election every year. You elect one from the junior class, one sophomore, junior, senior, and then they have two-year terms. So I don't know why you would have an election every year if you had two-year terms at the same point in time.
You got a new sophomore class coming in every year and it's because the seniors are-
I guess, that's how it works. But, so they have very detailed, like these are the, how the election works. These are the members. These are their functions and responsibilities. So in terms of having detail, that was the most detailed one that I could find. I shared those to you. Again, it's policy J-I-B-B. It's Milton, Hull, and North Reading. They're in your email, the links to that. If, we can have a discussion of those when you've had the chance to read it, but I just don't like to do communication between all of us via email. So that's why I waited until now. Ms. Wait, you have a question?
No, I was just going to say that I just want to make sure at our next meeting on the February 14th that we can talk about that, like a little bit more detail. And I'll try to touch base with Mr. Tebow too and just see what his thoughts are and, you know, possibly like even sketch out a model, just.
Can you, I think I've copied you on that email so that it's the, so the links, you won't have gotten it yet. Can you forward that email to Mr. Tebow so he can look at those as well? And also to Evan. We'll include Evan on that.
Can you forward it to me as well?
That would be great. And yeah, my intention was to just tell you I sent you that, tell everyone what it was. And then we can have, continue that discussion after everyone had a chance to look at them. That's all I have for my report. Anyone else other matters, may not have been anticipated. Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, just, I just got two items, Madam Chair. Of course, the Standard Times is still talking about awards and we're, you know, our student athletes are still picking up awards. Will Chase got Defensive Football Player of the Year, which was great to see. And also ongoing right at the moment through the 26th, which is Wednesday, the students, not only from Dartmouth High School, but all around are being judged via Zoom on Decker. So looking forward to seeing how that pans out. I've got to get that done tomorrow.
Excellent. Any other things to share? All right. So our next meeting is scheduled for February 14th. At 6:30. Very romantic. At this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss strategy relative to collective bargaining, not to return to open meeting.
So moved.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Wait. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please, Ms. Gunther. Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Mary Wait?
Yes.
Kathleen Ammaral?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.